Sorry about that. We'll start off the meeting with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under honor, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crack, roll call please.
Mr. Bowers.
President.
Mr. Dalton.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Ictor.
President.
Mr. Kuznar.
President.
Ms. Mayo. I believe she was, said she was not going to be here.
Yes, she has a work commitment.
Mr. Prednik. And he indicated he may call in.
Yes.
Mr. Kowalewski.
President.
Mr. Mayor.
September 5.
Manager, Lieutenant, and Solicitor here, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Moving on, what, item three of the agenda, consider approval of the March 10th and March 31st meeting minutes. What is council's pleasure?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Ictor, second by Ms. Dugan. Mr. Crack.
Just for, for purposes of the special meeting, in the, the one that's in your packet, it says "Agenda" instead of "Minutes." I've corrected that already. And it said Solicitor in paragraph four, and it should say para, Borough Labor Attorney, and I've corrected that as well. So those are already done.
Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries six-zero. I believe we do have one presentation this evening regarding the 2014 Borough Audit, and I'd like to invite Mr. Ed Furman from Maile LLP to come forward.
Thank you. I passed out two documents before the meeting. One's marked Audit Presentation, and the other is the Annual Financial Report. That's marked draft, but all the numbers are final. We're just in the process of finishing up, but since all, everything was set with that, we thought we'd come out and at least go over the numbers with you. I'll start with the document that says Audit Presentation first. The first page just lists the, a couple of the agenda items which I'm going to cover. The page after that require communications. The audit report will be a clean, unqualified opinion on the financials similar to prior year. We'll also issue two other reports. They're called SAS 114 and 115 reports. And what they are would be if we had any significant audit issues or major adjustments, would be the 114 letter, and the 115 would be if we had any major internal control recommendations. We didn't have either, so those will be clean reports also. One perspective issue, major change as far as government accounting next year, deals with the pension accounting. And at the end of 2015 municipalities will have to record their unfunded pension liability on as a liability actually on their balance sheet. Now, you're one of the few, very rare municipalities that actually have a slightly overfunded pension. So again, from your perspective, that's a major change of accounting for government, but it's going to have virtually no impact on, on your financial statements. Next page after that, I just put together a brief summary of just some of the things we do as, as far as the audit goes. At the bottom of that page are some of the things we do differently. We use the data extraction software, so we actually download 100% of your general ledger activity. We run it through audit software. We're looking for, on, on the expenses, we actually run pivot tables. So each line item on the expense, we run month-by-month summaries. We're looking for anomalies, potential duplicate payments, missing check sequences. So we do that with the expenses. We also use that for journal entry testing. We do an employee and a vendor match. So employee addresses we merge in with vendor addresses to see if there's any employee addresses that are showing up as vendors. We use that for audit sampling. We do a W2 analysis. And we also run what's called a Benford's Test, which is the next two pages. Benford was a mathematician who came up with, based on a certain size of a population, so many transactions should start with a 1, 2, all the way up through 9. So again, we run the, your ledger activity through that. We run a single digit, and then the next page we run a double digit. And again, we're just looking for anomalies. So the, the number of sequences that spike is where we do our audit testing. So we'll actually drill down into the activity and look for anything unusual. So it's a little bit different than just picking 20, 25 transactions and, and testing it that way. We're actually looking for, for unusual transactions or anomalies. The last page of the handout is an overall summary of the financial statements. At the top section is called the Government-Wide Financials, which are first. They're your full accrual financial statements. So you capitalize your fixed assets, you record depreciation expense, the debts recorded as a liability, almost like a for-profit balance sheet, and then you have net position or net equity. And also, a government financial really only shows one year of data. So I, I put in three years just to give you some trend information. So for 2014, cash investments were pretty comparable between 13. Receivables, most of that deals with taxes coming in in January, February. That's actually dropped in 2014. The capital assets, net depreciation expense, you had depreciation expense of about 1.7 million, and then you had, you know, gross capital asset increase of about 2 million. So you actually spent about 4 million in capital projects last year. And these are all the funds, governmental funds, water, and sewer. Accounts payable went down. You mainly had construction bills at the end of, of 2013. The notes and payable dropped from the prior year. The OPEB obligation, what that, what that is, is it's actually other post-employment benefits. So you offer limited medical coverage to retirees until they hit Medicare age, and that's where he actually has to do a calculation of that liability that's being earned on a, on a year-to-year basis, almost like a pension liability. So your liability's been going up about 100,000 a year. Although, from your size municipality with our other clients, this is a relatively modest liability. I have several clients that are well into the millions and tens of millions because they don't coordinate coverage with Medicare, or they allow spouse coverage. So again, yours is going up slightly, but again, nothing, nothing significant to, to be alarmed with. And that leaves you net position or net equity of about 44 million. So if you look at assets and debt-to-equity ratio, it's an extremely strong full accrual balance sheet. Statement of Activities is the revenue and expenses. Again, property taxes were pretty comparable. Actually, most of the revenues were pretty comparable year-to-year. There were some, some fluctuations in the expenses, and that worked its way down to a change in net position, or, or actually a surplus of about 4.2 million in 2014. And that compares to two prior years where, again, you had significant surpluses, over 6 million in 2013 and 3 million in 2012. The next caption area deals with the General Fund, and the fund financials are how you keep your bolts, how you do your budgeting, the day-to-day operating fund. So your fund balance in the General Fund at the end of 14 total was about 8.3 million. The actually unassigned piece was about 2 million. And that's about 19% of your General Fund revenue. Bond rating agencies look for anywhere from 6 to 8%, and GFOA, which is a national organization, is a recommending of about 18 to 20%. So for, from both a bond perspective and just a general accounting perspective, you have a very strong General Fund, fund balance. So that's a quick run-through of the, the audit presentation. I don't know if you'd like me to go through the actual financial statement, or you, you can review that and, and pass on questions. That's, that's your, your decision.
If council has any questions, we can address them now. Otherwise, I think we'll have some time to digest this and then be able to pass along questions through staff.
Again, again, the positive point is extremely strong balance sheet, extremely strong fund balance. You had no reportable conditions for us to report over to you. So overall, it was a, a strong year financially.
Any questions from council? At this time? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Furman.
All right. Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Move on to item five, public participation, the first round of public participation. I'll invite any members of the public who wish to come forward. To do so, please identify yourself, identify whether you're a Borough resident or not, sign in, and please keep comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Leo Skoda. I'm a resident of Phoenixville. I live at 312 Virginia Avenue. And the reason why I'm here is as a member of the Social Concerns Committee of the Borough of Phoenixville, or I should say the Phoenixville Area. And the first thing I wanted to do is to thank the Borough, and Borough Council, especially for the placement of the plaque out here in the hall, which honors those citizens that have yearly received the award. They're known as the Martin Luther King Memorial Award. The committee met here about two weeks ago, and we did a rededication of the plaque, which had originally hung back in the old Borough Hall. And if you do read the Phoenix, there was a nice picture of the Evening Phoenix on the front page and one on the inside page, and a very nice article which led to the next event of the Social Concerns Committee, which was just this past Saturday, where we had the annual community prayer breakfast, and we had about 200 people in attendance there. And again, the awardee for the Martin Luther King Award was Reverend Goodwin, who's a pastor of the Seventh Day Latter Day Saints Church, which shares their facilities with Parkside. They're in the Parkside Church there right alongside of Reeves Park. So he and his wife, their names will be added to the plaque. But we think that having that here at Borough Hall is just a, a wonderful thing for citizens to see the names, because it's really kind of like a who's who of Phoenixville when you read down through the names of people who have received this award. The other reason why I'm here is I think the mayor and, and hopefully the Borough Council President have received letters from the Social Concerns Committee, because we are going to try to have the Main Street Bridge, that we're going to have that named in honor of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. Now, I checked with Borough Manager Gene Crack about a month ago, and he confirmed that it is a county bridge, and, and therefore we would have to go through the Chester County Commissioners for any type of name change. I don't know that it's, there is an official name for the bridge. I mean, most people refer to it as either the Main Street Bridge, or they call it the Low Bridge. But in any event, similar to what happened with the Gay Street, which was a state bridge, we had to go through PennDOT. We also had to go through the state legislature to enact that change, and that eventually was changed to the Veterans' Memorial Gay Street Bridge, okay? So if we still want to keep Main Street out there, that's fine. There's no problem there. But what we were hoping through the letters that you would receive, and I'm sure they'll get copied and, and given to the other council people, so there's no rush tonight, but what we're hoping is that the Borough Council would support this effort. And then, we would have to then go to the County Commissioners and engage them as far as their support for having the, the bridge dedicated in the honor of Dr. Martin King. Bridges, I think, are physical structures, but they are also symbolic structures. They, they join our north and south sides. The Reverend Martin Luther King tried to bring together different racial groups, different ethnic groups, different cultural groups, different economic groups. That was his life work. And therefore, we think the naming of a bridge in his honor by the community of Phoenixville through the County of Chester would be very appropriate. Now, I have representatives here from both Grimes AME Church and also Bethel Baptist Church. So I'll introduce first somebody I'm sure you know, but it's Don Coppins here, and he'll talk to you about Grimes Church.
First off, good evening, everybody. I'm very happy to be standing here at, in this new Borough Hall. Being a lifelong resident of Phoenixville, it just warms my heart to see what has been going on here in Phoenixville, and the diversity of promoting Phoenixville as we go forward with the different community interests of the various, we have roughly about 40 different nationalities in Phoenixville. So it's a funny thing, as I look back at 81 years, I just can't believe that I'm 81 years old and been a part of this community, and to see what has happened, because, see, I can remember the north side was called Tunnel Hill, south side. And so consequently, most of the Afro-Americans lived on the north side of town. But the thing what I see, as I said, growing up and being a part, and hopeful that I have a few more years left in my life to see Phoenixville continue to improve, is that here I stand here on behalf of Grimes AME Church, our pastor is Reverend Carolyn V. Jordan, if you can't be here tonight. I'm a trustee of the church, that we adopt this proposal, hopeful council, regardless of your party affiliation. This is no money we're asking for. We're just asking for support, that we are happy to go to the county, but go to the county with Phoenixville backing us. My community seeing the need to continue to build bridges together. So my advocacy here tonight, I have here, which I will submit, two letters, one to the mayor, one to the council, which you'll share with us. Now, I'd like to introduce the pastor of Bethel Baptist Church. That's on the north side of town. That hopefully we can link in together to make this happen. So Reverend Nathan Coleman of Bethel Baptist Church. Come on up, Reverend.
Mr. President, Mayor, council members, I am grateful to have this opportunity to stand before you to advocate what has already been stated. We ask that you support this project. We think it'll be a wonderful contribution to enhancing the unity in Phoenixville. I am not a resident of Phoenixville, but I have been here for 11 years as pastor of Bethel Baptist Church, which is located on the north side. And as Mr. Coppins said, and as Mr. Skoda has articulated, I think that a bridge named after Dr. Martin Luther King, whose ministry not only affected African-Americans, but affected all people. I think a bridge that is named in his honor would be a symbol that will continue to bring together the community that is already here in Phoenixville. I've been here for 11 years, and I've enjoyed being here and ministering here and getting to know the people here. And I want to continue to be in partnership to maintain and to continue to grow together as a community, and I want to be a part of that. I think that naming a bridge after Dr. King, who's one of my heroes, would be very important. And so I stand here to ask for your support in this project that I think would be very important and very significant. Thank you so much. I also have letters for President Kowalewski and Mayor Speck, and I would like to submit that at this time.
Thank you. I'll pass these letters to Mr. Crack and ask him to circulate amongst council. And I think this would probably be appropriate for your Infrastructure Committee to, to discuss this initially, and then maybe come back next month with a recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is Frank Pujia from La Pujia Building Contractors. We're interested in purchasing a piece of land that you have that previously was a home that burned down on 21 East Emmett Street. I guess my, you know, my requests are very simple. It's not on the market currently. I put an offer letter in to the Borough Manager. What I, what I was, why I'm here is because I, I sent a letter of earnest. I've heard nothing back, but I was told I had to come to the meeting to, in order to see if it is of, it is for sale.
Mr. Crack.
Sure. The, the, the way we would normally do this is, and I explained this to the gentleman, that the, the offer letter would come through committee first, and then it would go to, to council. And then I was anticipating that this would hit council at the May 12th meeting. He advised that, you know, it's, it's an economic situation for him from a financial perspective of when he can get his loans, when he can do the transition to acquire the property and what have you, that the only, the only way that you might be able to do that is you go to council at, at the public meeting.
Right, right.
And you basically state your, your need. And if they're so inclined, they can, they can, they don't have to take something through committee. They can do it from the floor. But that's not for me to, to ask. That's for him to ask.
Right, right.
And I, and he understood that. So that's why he's here today.
Yeah, he explained that pretty, pretty well. I, I didn't mean to put him on the spot. I just, one of the things I was petitioning you, you for, and how I see it as a, how I see this as a beneficial move for both the township, or excuse me, the Borough and myself, is it's a land that's getting no revenue from you, and you're having to, you're having to pay for the upkeep of this property. One, meaning the grass, you know, the grass cutting every month, or excuse me, every week in the summertime. Secondary, you're, you know, it's getting no tax, or, you know, anybody who lives there paying tax on it, you know, per capita. The third of which is, is, you know, I, the school tax and the city tax. I mean, you know, I, I'm looking forward to building there as well as putting a family in there that would, you know, pop, give you positive revenue. You're losing at least probably $8,000 to $10,000 a year on that property, which I'm willing to purchase that from you, put my house there, and you'll be gaining that with, with the people who live there. I mean, as far as taxpayers. Your appraised value of the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Your appraised value of the property was at $20,000. I offered $17,000, being there's no realtor, you know, in our, and funds, you need to get my loan straight for the building process. Reason why I'm here is to see if we can move it along.
Well, this is not the time for council to entertain that, a motion on, on that nature.
Okay.
Council can bring that up if they wish during other parts of this meeting.
Okay.
So I think, I appreciate you coming, and I appreciate you presenting it, but, and it's going to be up to council after public participation to, to, to move or to do what they wish to do.
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize the.
Yeah.
The proper channels on here. I mean, I, I know I have to present it, but I didn't know when, in which, what part of the meeting you do that.
No, this would be your opportunity to present it. So we appreciate you presenting it as such. And then if you have any other comments, otherwise, I think, you know, if council wishes, they can address it later in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi. Well, my name's Amanda. That's the first thing you should know. I've never been here. I've only lived here for about seven or eight months. The reason I'm here is I don't have anything like prepared or fancy or to give you or anything. The reason I'm here is because I was sleeping some Saturday, or maybe it was a Monday, and I heard people outside my house, like, cutting down all the trees. And that's why I'm here, because I don't understand why they were cut down. And I live right by Bridge Street and Prospect. There's like a little alleyway that goes up, and they're all gone. And I used to look out of my window and see like these really pretty, beautiful trees, and now I just see an alleyway with graffiti. I don't understand why the graffiti is still there and the trees were ripped out. When I called in, I talked to a really nice lady that I got really mean to. And she told me like a lot of things that she was told to tell people, which one was that the ice in the winter couldn't melt with the trees there, so they had to take them down. Two was that it wasn't safe anymore, that they were messing with the electro, electrical wires that are there. But I live right there. I've never had an issue, ever, ever. And that it was dangerous because the cops couldn't see down the alley. I don't understand that either. So I guess my concern is, A, who's going to clean up the graffiti now that you guys ripped out the trees, and that's all I see from my window. And two, what's going to go there now? I was told an art gallery. I don't want an art gallery. I want the, like, the trees back where they were. Does, am I allowed to ask questions to you? And are you allowed to answer me?
Yes. So to answer your first question, the graffiti, that's the responsibility of the, the owners of the property.
Okay.
And I'm sure Borough staff, if they have not already given, given the appropriate notices, they will be on top of that.
Okay.
And as far as your second, I, I'm not aware of any plans for that. I do know that there is some activity through the Beautification Committee that we have to include that in an overall plan for improvements in downtown, that, that alleyway, as well as other sections. But there's nothing proposed concrete as of yet. So if you are, if you want to have a voice in that decision, I would invite you to go to the Beautification Committee meetings and voice it there. I think that'd be the proper, that'd be a good way to add your voice to that discussion.
Okay. Is there anybody that knows why they were taken down?
Well, they were, as you mentioned, they were taken down for, for various safety issues.
Okay. All right. So I guess I'll go to that meeting and talk about it then.
As far as, yes, I mean, I would invite you, if you, if you are interested as to what happens with, with, what is that? That's gold? Flostrabway. That's the name of it. If you are interested in what happens with Flostrabway, yes, I think the Beautification Committee would be a good place to have a voice as to what goes on in that alley.
Is there anybody else that has said anything, or is it just me, like crazy tree woman?
I have not. You're the first person that has, that I've heard comment from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dave Meadows, 615 Main Street. And I'm just here to encourage council members on page five of your five-page agenda tonight under the Policy Committee. I would highly endorse and encourage council to vote affirmatively to schedule an advertising ordinance amending chapter 27 of the zoning ordinance. The Borough is probably under the biggest move for development that it's probably seen in its 160-some years. Just, everybody wants to develop everything, and it's a good thing for the Borough. But as we know, there's a new zoning ordinance that's been in effect for about a year and four or five months. And when you write something new, things aren't always clear. And when you get in and try and implement them, you find there's some shortcomings. As I understand, the purpose of this is to try and close some loopholes that would help keep the Borough characteristics that we all know and love in our individual neighborhoods, and also look to close, not let us go backwards in terms of overdevelopment and parking regulations and things like that. So I would encourage you to schedule, schedule the, the advertising and the hearing on this proposed zoning ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Thank you, Mr. Meadows.
Couple of questions, beginning with Item 9C. Consider resolution authorizing the signing of all documents required master casting agreement with PennDOT. What, what is that?
Under resolutions, Mr. Dr. Sanic?
I'm sorry, yeah, resolution, yes.
Mr. Crack, can you provide some comment on that?
Sure. Anytime PennDOT does a, some roadwork, they're required, if in fact there is a, a manhole cover or a gas cover or water cover or anything in the roadway, there's a, a price to replace that and to bring that, that lid back up to the top of road, and that's what the master casting agreement is, is that we will, when they come through town, they will adhere to those pricings and do it to the standards that we're looking for and to those particular heights. So it's, we do that about every couple, three years.
Thank you, Mr. Crack.
So that's ongoing road, roadwork, is that what that is, or?
Yes.
Next question I had was on the next page, Item 11, Planning Commission A, Item 1, says Planning Commission recommended 6-0 in their action memo, March 24, 2015, recommend council Doc Propose Zoning Ordinance Amendment. Which zoning ordinance amendment is that?
I believe that is Item 12F2.
All right, that's the one, that's going to be discussed.
Yes.
All right. The next one I had was Item B, Parks and Recreation Committee, that's under Item 12B1. Consider resolution for submission of a C2-P2 grant for funding a Friendship Field lighting project. What are the proposed hours of the lighting? When will the field be lit? What are the hours that it'll be lit?
I don't think that-
Will there be hours?
I don't, I don't believe that that has been addressed yet by council or by its committee as to set hours of operation for those lights. But I think we need the lights before we can figure out when we can turn them on, not to be glib, but.
Well, I, so you, you have no idea, is it going to be all night, or is it going, are there going to be certain hours too?
I doubt it's going to be all night, Dr. Sanic, but as I said, council has not yet made a, made a motion or approved any type of timing as to those lights.
Well, I think you should be thinking about that with the neighborhood where it's at. The next item is right below it. Consider approval of Friendship Field Agreement for Use by Renaissance Academy. What are the terms of that?
As of right now, that agreement hasn't been approved. I believe that there is some limited terms as far as usage of the field on hours immediately after school, but that'll be coming up for discussion later.
Will, will you discuss the terms then, what the consideration is, what the hours are, what, what the res, all right. The other was C, Finance Committee, Five. That was Item C5. Consider staff recommendation to acquire tax parcel 1535, an amount of $500. What is the Borough acquiring that for?
Again, there's no set plans as to what it's for, it's just an opportunity to acquire a piece of land that is adjacent to existing Borough land, and I think it's in between our land and land owned by the county, is it? Mr. Crack?
It's, it's, it's land that is adjacent to an area where we have a pump station, and we currently have an easement on that land. This would provide, if we ever needed to move that pump station, we would obey the owners of the land and not have to deal with an easement.
Let's see, all right, thank you. And one last question, it's not on the agenda, but I'm told they voted on that tonight during the earlier committee meeting, Parks and Recreation, concerning, I guess for lack of a better term, young lungs at play. And my question would be, adopting, putting up no smoking signs, all parks and playgrounds. Item 1 says that the areas, I'm wondering, is there a definition for what area is?
Unfortunately, I was not part of that committee, Dr. Sanic, so I can't address it. Again, I guess that would, that would be something that will be discussed here shortly within the meeting.
And other part in with that, too, it talks about, in the opening paragraph, tobacco smoke. I'm assuming that when it also refers to smoke later on, that it means that, but would also, would it also outlaw marijuana smoking?
That's already illegal in Pennsylvania, at least as of right now.
All right, that's good. And lastly, since sometimes there's unintended consequences to these things, if they can't smoke tobacco on the public, I have to find out what area, define what area means, but I'll take it to mean that it's park property, but I'm not sure.
I think that, I, that's my understanding as of right now, but I need to confirm-
Does that mean then they just all shift across the street onto private property and catch a smoke there, next to someone's house?
I don't know what it means.
You've got that in Reese Park and many of the other parks.
Dr. Sanic, I can't-
Or do you have a bigger envelope area?
I can't speak to what would or would not happen. That'd be purely speculative.
All right. Well, perhaps some of these questions will be answered as it goes along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to be super brief. My name's Jennifer Steinmeier, and I'm a resident of 137 Fifth Avenue. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I was here with some of the other neighbors in support of Dave Meadows and the things that he expressed here tonight. So, that's all I will reiterate in the interest of time, but I just wanted to let you know that there's other representation from our neighborhood tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Seeing no other public participation, we'll close that up. A latecomer.
I live over on Anderson Avenue, and I'm here to ask about the traffic plans for when the 23 bridge gets closed. What kind of coordination has happened between Schuylkill Township and the Borough? What are you doing to remediate the traffic that'll happen on Anderson Avenue, so the eastbound streets, and then the southbound streets, the Clay, the Clayowners? That would be in the morning, and then the westbound streets in the afternoon, and then the northbound streets. Right now, the traffic's terrible in the morning. A couple times, there have been near miss accidents, and children almost getting hit on the way to school. I want to understand, from a safety perspective, what we're going to do? Put temporary one-way signs up, police officers in that area, because as of right now, the PennDOT, PennDOT has allocated the detour routes around our neighborhood, but we know that people will go right through the neighborhood in order to, to deter all the traffic lights. So, here just to ask, as part of the residents in my community are very concerned about that.
And I believe that there has been discussion with PennDOT and with Schuylkill and with staff here as to that detour route, and do you have anything to add, Mr. Crack?
Unfortunately, the PennDOT route is the PennDOT route. That's the designated route. People are going to do what people do, as he's alluded to. There will be a multitude of changes of direction by everybody that's driving for at least a couple of weeks. Other than the monitoring that is suggested by the, the Police Department, changing signs won't work, turning them temporary one-ways won't work, putting up barricades won't work, it's just, people have to get used, I hate to say it this way, but people have to get used to what is going to happen for that six-to-eight month period of time. It's, we had a great lengthy discussion about it yesterday with PennDOT. All we can do is monitor. It's, it's the cause and effect of trying to fix something that's a bigger problem, which is the bridge.
So we're going to wait until something happens to do something about it?
I didn't say that.
Well, you just said we're just going to, it's the cause and effect.
It is a cause and effect.
So, I lived in Easttown in Trudiffin. My dad was a road engineer, has, is still a road engineer for 50-some years. Helped build sections of the Walt Whitman and other bridges around Philadelphia. He's given me multitude of ideas of what could be done and could be done. The one-way signs do work, they've implemented them in Trudiffin and Easttown for high traffic flow rates during rush hour. I suggest you look at that. I suggest we do not wait till a kid gets hit or something terrible on that, those lines. Easy measures could be put in place. It's an opportunity even for revenue generation, if you're going to put one-way signs up, people don't follow those. So, I suggest you heed the warnings now, because with the detour routes in place and people going down by the school area, we, we should take action now before that happens. So, that's, I'm just addressing from my community's voice to you guys, all right?
No, and I invite you to, you can send it to me, and I'll make sure it gets on the staff, any of the recommendations that your father may have passed on, so that we can consider them.
And if you're waiting for PennDOT to do the right thing, you're going to be waiting for a long time, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? Seeing none, we'll close that run of public participation and move on with appointments and public resolutions. Looks like we have an interview.
You've interviewed him in the past, as you recall, last year.
What is council's pleasure with regard to interviewing William Davidson for the Planning Commission? Do we want to conduct that now?
Should I make a motion for that? Because I'll make a motion to interview him.
I don't think we need a motion unless anyone objects to his interview at this point. Okay. Mr. Davidson, why don't you introduce yourself, give us a, an introduction, and then we'll open it up for council questions. And I'd like to thank you for your interest in serving on the Planning Commission.
My name's Bill Davidson. I'm at 23 South Main Street. I've lived in the Borough for about 17 years now, and I previously was on the Planning Commission from 2000 to 2002. I started as the Secretary in the year 2000, became a member in 2001, and was Chairman in 2002. I needed to leave the Planning Commission due to the fact of my travel for work, and just was traveling way too much that I couldn't make the meeting, so. So I left the Planning Commission at the end of 2002, and now I'm looking to potentially get back on the Planning Commission as my travel schedule and work schedule has all changed.
Thank you. Open it up for any questions to council? Ms. Richter?
Mr. Davidson, thank you, one, for coming out to interview. My question is, with a lot of these appointments that we make, we have individuals who find themselves running into conflicts with different projects that come up. Do you foresee that being an issue that you would encounter being part of the Planning Commission? If so, how would you deal with it? And do you think it would be something that would happen quite often that would, would render you in that position?
Can I ask you, what do you mean by conflicts? Boards that you sit on, things like that?
Or projects that you may be involved in downtown. We have, you know, a number of us are involved in things where there's abstaining that has to occur. That's what I'm-
Yeah, previously, I mean, when I was on in 2000 and 2002, there was quite a bit of things that I was involved in, so there were things that I needed to abstain from. So, that's what I ended up doing, if I needed to abstain. If I wasn't sure, I'd check with the solicitor, and if the recommendation was I should abstain, then I would abstain. At this point, I, I'm trying to think, other than if it was about my own business at this point, I, that would be the only thing that would be a, a conflict.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Hearing nothing from council on that. Mr. Bowers?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. William Davidson to the Planning Commission.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Ms. Dugan. What would the term be, just for the record?
I actually had that somewhere. It would be a four, a four-year term, because-
Beginning?
Beginning now-
Okay.
Through 2018, 2019.
2019. Okay, so it's a four-year term, beginning immediately through the, the four years. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-1 with Mr. Dalton, the nay. The only other thing I'll do at this point is my standard monthly call for residents that are interested. We do have openings, or we will have openings on the various boards and commissions that we have in the, in the Borough of Phoenixville. If you're interested, I invite you to contact one of the council members, can't contact staff, or look on the website for the applications. Moving on to Item 7, Communications and Council's Participation. Ms. Richter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just have a couple items that I'd like to discuss during this part of the conversation. First is last, a correction to two items that were discussed at last month's meeting and then reported in the news. The first item is the Bridge Street crime statistics. I think we need to take great prudence in reporting statistics in the public eye, where they haven't been vetted and incorrect numbers go out. I received a number of correspondence from individuals and businesses that had great issue with such a high number that turned out to be incorrect. Several of us talked about this, and, you know, it's, it's one thing to put the number out there, and everybody sees that number, what they don't see is the redaction and, and change of that number, which ultimately occurred. But just for public edification, I want to make sure that it is known that that number was tremendously overstated last month, and it was indeed corrected in the article, so I draw attention to that. Secondly, there was an article in regards to the solicitor choice, and, and it was misstated in the article that we were actually increasing the cost of the solicitor on the Borough residents, when indeed we were moving from a solicitor who was charging $135 an hour to a solicitor that was charging $135 an hour. So, again, misinformation that I would like to make sure that is, is corrected in, in this public forum. Couple other points, in this month's packet, we received a update on the fee collection since assigning Portnoy Law Associates to collect fees. I think it's great, we have almost $100,000 in amounts recovered, and that represented almost 17% of the total, total assets due. So, tremendous kudos to Portnoy, and also to council for, for making something like that happen. That's potentially revenue that we didn't have and weren't going to collect anytime soon. And then lastly, I'll make this a motion so that it can be discussed, but I would like council to consider, so my motion will be for council to consider elimination of committee meetings for movement to two public meetings of council, where one meeting is the committees in a working-type session, but since it is publicly advertised, action can be taken, and then the second would remain the main meeting of council.
Now that we have a motion, a second, I'd like to make a comment.
Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Ms. Dalton.
I think it's really very important to have these broken up, just because things, there are so many different things that we discuss, and things are completely different from one meeting to the next, that I feel that these meetings will last for hours, and if you break them up, we get to the opportunity, people aren't in a hurry to leave, we get more time to address specific issues, the public doesn't have to wait, if they want to come and make a comment, they don't have to wait through a bunch of things they're not interested in talking about, that they want to hear about, they've got exactly what they want to hear about. Like, if they're interested in a finance thing, they're going to just come to the finance meeting. If they're interested in a policy issue, they'll just come to the policy meeting. Parks and Rec Committee, the same thing. I feel like these meetings need to be broken up so that we can give it the proper attention that it deserves. that it deserves.
Ms. Richter?
Mr. President, could I amend my motion to make this active in the month of June?
We'll note that as an amendment to the motion. Further discussion? Mr. Kuzner?
I was happy to hear that this was going through for a number of reasons. Obviously, there's pros and cons to everything that you do, but I really like the fact that council as a whole is now going to view everything that goes through all of the committees, and sometimes receiving the packets just a few days before the actual council meeting can be a little overwhelming. So, this way, we get to digest everything and talk about everything going on as a whole. We were doing this before, too. I'm sure all the council members know this is more, just so the public understands that we were doing this method before, and I'm very eager to see how this works out for us all. So, I'm happy that it was brought up, and also, it's gonna help some members of staff by freeing up their time as well.
I'll just clarify, I think everyone has been seeing everything. The staff has done a very good job of getting the packets out to all members of council, not just the committee members. That was a change that was instituted. Other comments? Mr. Bowers?
I, I do like the concept. I think this'll really facilitate more discussion across council, across committees. It'll make us all much more informed, as well as the public much more informed. I think some of us have been frustrated by the lack of the time it takes some issues to move forward. I think recently, Mill Street, you know, we wanted to go ahead with it. We wanted to help the residents on Mill Street by moving something through, but we were bound to move things through committee. Perhaps in this type of proposed setting, we certainly could move issues forward more quickly. I see lots of benefits to it, and encourage, encourage support for this, for this motion.
Any other comments on it? I'll just add that this was something that I had proposed several months ago, and there was no support for it, so I'm glad we're at least discussing it. I think the motion may be a little bit premature, because I think we need to figure out exactly what is being proposed and how the structure would work. I don't think the motion addresses that, and I don't know how it should address it at this point, to be honest with you. I also think that we need to be careful about having two voting sessions. My understanding, or what I was proposing before, would have been a working session and then a voting session, so that there could be one meeting that the public could come to where they would see the votes, and I think that might be something that might be better or worse. I don't know the answer to it. I just, I think we're moving rather quickly down a path when we don't know exactly what that path is at this point. So, I would invite discussion at this, and maybe a presentation in May, as to what exactly would be part of these meetings. Seeing no further discussion on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So, motion carries three-two, or four-two, sorry, my math is off.
So, sorry, so, so based on the comments there that you made at the end, I will provide some clarification and a further motion to hopefully get us some scope. So, I'll propose that this begin in May as the stated, previous motion, sorry, June, as a previous motion, and the meetings would be conducted on the second and third Tuesday of the month.
Which one would be which?
I, I'm proposing both are voting meetings, because they're publicly advertised. The first-
Would committees, people, like, would the chair of the committee still commit a play, or that, is that gone? Is that what we're talking about?
No, the committee meeting would be the second, the committee-style meeting would be the second of the two. So, the normal Borough Council meeting would remain the first Tuesday of the month. Second Tuesday of the month, and the fourth, the alternate Tuesday then would be the committee-style.
What times would they be?
Same, I get it, yep, same times, seven o'clock.
Well, shouldn't we start at six, because it's gonna last a lot longer? I really do think we should start at six.
I tend to agree, at least for the second meeting.
Six.
But, hey, this is all conjecture at this point, because it wasn't part of the motion, so none of this is actually approved. We just have two meetings.
Right, right now, we're, and we're just discussing, so should I, can I put this in a motion so that we can discuss the logistics?
Well, I mean, we're in the middle of council participation, so I figured you could say anything you want.
Yep.
Okay. So, I'd be amicable to a seven o'clock start on the first meeting and a six o'clock start on the second meeting.
Okay, so, so we can get this framed out. We have the second and third Tuesday. The second Tuesday would be a seven o'clock start. The third Tuesday would be a six o'clock start. The third Tuesday would be more based upon the committee structure with the second Tuesday following an agenda type that we have in front of us tonight.
That, that would be what I would, would ask for. And also, I, looking at the calendar, what I meant but did not say was, the second Tuesday is our normal meeting, then a week off, and then it would be the fourth Tuesday, I guess, so that there's that gap.
Okay. Two meetings.
You can be off.
Correct.
All right. So, so the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday?
Correct.
The second Tuesday would start at seven, and would be a regular agenda-type meeting as we have currently ten up before us tonight.
Correct.
The fourth Tuesday would be an agenda based upon committees, where there would be discussion, however, it would be advertised so that-
Action could come out if desired.
Okay, and that meeting would start at six.
Correct.
And who would chair that meeting? Would that be the president?
Or rotate chairs, depending on-
I would ask for the president to lead the meeting, and as we move into each committee, the committee chairs would run that section of the meeting.
Okay.
How do we do it now, where you print out things that are-
Absolutely, absolutely.
What's that? Solicitor and video would be at both meetings? Video is not budgeted for.
Right.
Is that issue?
Yeah, right. I don't, open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Being probably the only one on council here who has lived through this, you know, I, I do support the two meetings, the committee of the whole, because of the involvement with everybody. But the downside of that is that, like Councilwoman Dugan says, it's a long night. So, the six o'clock, six o'clock start is good. In the past, we have not videotaped the committees of the whole, nor did we have the solicitor present during our committees of the whole.
But if action is gonna be taken, I think we need the solicitor there.
But we could defer to the regular council meeting for action, couldn't we? I mean-
The way Mr. Richter's proposing is that action would, could potentially occur, so if action's gonna occur, I would, I would, I would expect the solicitor to be there, and I would want him, want him to be there.
Andy was it, but, it's been so long.
Ms. Richter, I mean, I'm not trying to dance around this issue, but if there's a potential for action, and as we see tonight, it comes up at the spur of the moment, I'm gonna want the solicitor there to guide us. That would be my recommendation. I guess I'm only one of eight, but I would recommend that we have that solicitor there. Ms., Ms., Ms. Dugan?
I'm just, I'm just saying, I know that this is gonna be more time, that we're gonna be more hours, billable hours, here for the solicitor, too, that he wasn't required to be to, for, be at all the committee meetings, too. But also, I don't believe that we should put the extra money out to videotape the second meeting, even if there is gonna be action. There's a lot of times we have action, like at special meetings, where we haven't videotaped it, because that's seven hundred and fourteen dollars a month, and, and if that's double it, if we tape both of them. So, I'm just totally not in support of double taping.
So, I'll go ahead and say that let's have the solicitor there. We're trying to do something that's progressive. We're trying to continue a vision, and, and all of the, Mr. Meadows made comment to all the action in the borough, let's give ourselves two times to be able to enact items. So, I will ask that the solicitor be at both meetings.
And not videotaping.
But no videotaping.
Okay, so, and I'm gonna ask for someone to make this motion, but what I've got so far is that there'd be a meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, which would begin at seven, which would follow the normal agenda meeting. The solicitor would be there, and it would be videotaped as, as it currently is. The fourth Tuesday of the month would be a committee of the whole meeting. I like that term, so I'll, I'll borrow it from you, Mr. Mayor. Beginning at six, and again, the solicitor would be there, and I guess we should ask, are you available for that night?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Which would be run by the president, however, would be individually or independent or, I guess that'd be the way to say it, the, each committee head would run their portion of the meeting, and then defer to the next committee. So, I, I think we would, we could stay with the appointments to the, to the chairs of the committee, but I don't think we need actually the appointments of the committee members at that point.
Something for us, there was a chair, and then you're all members of that committee.
Yep.
So, Ms. Dugan, Mr. Richter?
Well, I guess that's, yeah, you're, Mr. Crack is clarifying that, I guess, after this, if this motion passes, I should appoint everybody as a member of every committee so that they could all discuss at that committee meeting. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So, that's what I've got. Is that what?
I'll put it in a motion.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, I was gonna read it back, but-
Do you, I, I, Mr. Crack, do you have that?
I'll get it.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton, and I'll read it back just for edification. Second Tuesday of the month, seven PM start, agenda, normal agenda, solicitor will be present, it will be videotaped, it'll be a voting, it'll be an advertised, duly advertised meeting so that voting can occur. Fourth Tuesday of the month will be a six o'clock start, the solicitor will be present. At this time, we will not do the videotaping, however, we could always address that later. I think that's the, that's it. With all that being said, any further discussion? Mr. Bowers?
If, if all members of council are, then therefore all members of committee, and there is a vote, then what is the purpose of moving a recommendation out of committee to council? Isn't it effectively a vote of council and approved? So, I would suggest that, that the committee voting structure remain the same, and the recommendation is made to move to council in the, for the second, the second Tuesday meeting.
Okay. But that's, again, it goes back to the point that the initial motion considers that council could take action at that meeting, so I think we're stuck between a rock and a hard place there.
Can that be a, can that be a motion only a chair, or a council president, or not? How do we distinguish between those types of motions?
I don't think that they're, I, I think John's, Ms. Richter's motion does not envision the distinction between those two.
If I might, I, I can look into this further for you, because you, you're not doing this until June, but using Westchester's model, what they do is they have the working session, they get all of the items that they wanna move forward into what they call a consent calendar, where they agree that those are the things that they want to approve, and then all the things that they still want to debate are separate items. So, everything on this, unless somebody changes their mind, is one motion, and it's all approved at that regular meeting. And then the information that you wanna continue to have dialogue for the public purpose, that is listed separately as agenda items. The meeting that you have as a working session, as, as Mr. Richter's pointed out, affords you the opportunity, not necessarily that you need to do anything, but if you, if something comes up, and we all know that stuff comes up periodically, it affords you the opportunity to take a vote that night and not have to wait until two weeks later. Did I say all of that correct?
You did, Mr. Crack, but I think it's really a question of council prerogative on how they wanna treat both meetings. Committee of the whole is a relatively standard operation, and it gives you a chance as a working session to basically go over the ideas and set the agenda for the regular meeting. I know a lot of municipalities don't wanna necessarily get into habit of voting at each meeting, but you've kept the option open at your work session to do that if you need to, but you can decide how you want that to operate and function. But again, if, it sounds to me like what you're saying is, that fourth Tuesday will be a work session, it'll be a committee of the whole, you'll talk about the ideas with the plan to vote on the actual action items at your regular public meeting, but, but that'll evolve as council moves ahead with this new idea.
Is that clarified?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Mr. Kuzner?
If the solicitor could clarify this, or do all committees, because it sounds like if all were making our recommendations, we wouldn't need a solicitor at both meetings. Are, with your experience, I mean, or past council members who have been through committee of the holes, was there a solicitor there at those meetings? Because there's no, just like we're not recording the committee meetings we have, if we're having a committee of the whole, there really shouldn't be a need for a solicitor if we're just making recommendations, and he'll just be at the, the main council meeting, the first one.
But the distinction I'm drawing is that you could have action at that, that committee meeting of the whole, and you can't have, you can't have, under our current structure, a committee cannot adopt something on behalf of Borough Council. The committee of the whole could during that working session. So, that's, that possibility, to me, invites the, the need for the solicitor to be there to advise us.
Unless you feel differently, it really could be a case-by-case, meeting-by-meeting basis, if you envision the need for legal representation, but obviously, that's, that's up to you. But again, we never know when things are gonna come up and when you need to act, but I would defer to council as far as, you know, when, when you want a solicitor present.
Well, I had asked a question in the beginning from members of council and the solicitor. From your experience, have all of these committees of the whole meetings had a solicitor at them, or is it varied?
In the, in the time that I was here, when we had it from two thousand eight to two thousand and ten, the solicitor was at both meetings, and I, I'll be forthright with you, once you taste the ability to conduct business, it can go that way, because you, it gives you the opportunity to do it. So, caution i- in that area is that you gotta, you gotta police yourself to make sure that most of the things that you're trying to do are, in fact, a committee of the whole with a recommendation to go to council, and unless it's necessary, limit that action at, at that night, but we never know what that's gonna be on a given night.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I can't really recall. It sounds more like what the solicitor says, we, we would, we based it on what the needs were. The committee of the whole will have an agenda, and perhaps one way to examine this would be judging from the agenda items, rather than have the solicitor be here for five or six hours, have, you know, break that in half, items that we think are gonna require action, have him at the first part of the meeting and address those committees first, and then that way, we could turn the solicitor loose and save some money. So, that, that's one thing to consider. But like you said, I felt in the past that those two meetings worked very well. Number one, to be able to get business done, that could be done, and didn't have to go, you didn't have the weight point.
I mean, I think we're missing another option, which is not to have that of being a voting meeting, and then I think it eliminates the concerns that are being raised, and we don't have that issue. But that's not the motion on the floor at this point. Any further comment on it? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five-one. We're still in communication and council participation.
Yeah, I have something. I just, since, I guess we're talking about this, I'll probably bring it, I'll bring it up. In the February meeting, we scheduled a couple meetings to interview, first, the solicitors, and second, the labor lawyers. And for our meeting on March thirty-first, which was seven weeks after we scheduled it, we, there were three of us there on time, and we had to wait fifteen minutes for the fourth person and twenty-five minutes to get a quorum. We had a bunch of professionals waiting to interview. I've never apologized so many times in my life. I felt I was so embarrassed by our council, and I think that that's something that we have to consider, that we did, we volunteered, nobody made us take these positions, and we have, we represent the borough, and if we represent is unprofessional, I really think that that just looked, it reflects very badly on our borough, and I just don't think any of us wanna do that, and I would really hope that that's something that we don't have a problem with again, and that people just take that into consideration before they decide to not come, come late, schedule something else. You know, obviously, there are obvious exceptions- there are obvious exceptions that people have to miss for work or, you know, in Mr. Kovaleski's case, a baby. But, you know, this is just something that I just kind of feel like we really need to be more on top of this because I felt like we looked so unprofessional.
Seeing no other council particip, Mr. Bowers?
Did have one other item. Thank you, Council President, for, for council communications. Just a reminder that the Coontail Martial Arts Club of Phoenixville is holding its fourth annual WWII South Pacific Veterans Annual Ceremony. Coontail on Thursday, April 16th, from 7:30 to 8:30. The Coontail Martial Arts Club is located in the Franklin Commons. This is an event where the Martial Arts Club will honor those Americans and Filipino soldiers, sailors and marines who died and survived the baton death march and the WWII South Pacific Theater of Combat. The event will also include the VW Post 7155 and the KFAAI Capabana Filipino-American Association of Chester County and the Filipino-American Association of Philadelphia. It's, it's a great event and would encourage those that are available and have the time to attend. Again, Thursday, April 16th, 7:30 to 8:30 at the Franklin Commons.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Any other council participation or communication? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Mr. Bowers?
One item for, for new business. On the 31st, we, we interviewed our labor solicitors. And I would like to make a motion to direct staff to approach each of the firms that were represented at the 31st meeting and request that they submit a best and final offer to council.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion?
I've got a comment on this one, too. I feel like when we decide to put out an RFP, we decide to like, that is what, you know, we don't do this all the time for other companies that, you know, for the stuff that's not professional services. Why do we let them get a second bite of the apple? I mean, I'm not entirely comfortable with doing it that way because I feel like they presented what they had and now they have the benefit of knowing who their competition is. And now they're going to give their prices or their, just whatever that is that they want to present in a way that they, now they have an advantage. Now granted, all of them will, but I just feel like they shouldn't be that way. It doesn't seem particularly fair as far as I'm concerned.
Well, it's equalized in as, I'm sorry, if you may, equalized in as much as that each of the firms represented will be given equal opportunity to respond with a best and final offer.
Are we allowing firms to get in or is that for?
No, absolutely not. No. That would be, that would not be, I believe, ethical, you know, to, to proceed that way. But certainly, this bit type of bid process, I think allows for this approach. It is not a closed bid, bid process. So I think it's, I think it's appropriate. I know that we've had firms stand before us and indicate that they were willing to consider their, their proposal. And I think we should consider taking advantage of that offer.
Any other discussion? I'll just put out there that we did this, this council did that last year, and I voted against it with the streets bids, and they went up. So we may be inviting ourselves getting the opposite effect of what we're looking for here. And for that reason, I'll be voting no. Any other further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-2 with myself and Ms. Dugan opposing same. Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, resolutions.
I'll make a motion to consider a resolution acknowledging Tina Peters for her 26 years of service on the Planning Commission.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers. And for everyone here and for those at home, I'll read in the proposed resolution. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Tina Peters as a member and chairwoman of the Planning Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Tina Peters served diligently and honorably as a member and chair of the Phoenixville Planning Commission from February 1989 through March 2015. And whereas Tina Peters provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Planning Commission and many borough councils during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Tina Peters for all of her efforts and commitment to the borough and performing her dedicated responsibilities over the past 26 years. Now there, now therefore, be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Tina Peters, Tina Peters is hereby recognized and publicly acknowledged for her tremendous commitment and effort in performing her duties and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors. Any discussion on the, the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. And I believe, do we have Ms. Peters' daughter here to accept it? And accepting on behalf of Ms. Peters, her daughter Christine DiMartini?
I'd just like to let everybody know that this is the last public office that mom held, and it was very important to her. And today, when we were coming back from Fox Chase, she said to me, you know, I had the option of getting paid to do this, and I never took a penny, and that means a lot to me. And it meant a lot to work with the people that I've gotten to work with since I started. And you all should know that.
Moving on. What is council's pleasure with respect to item B?
I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of a resolution acknowledging Joshua Stricker for his service on the zoning hearing board.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Dalton. I'll give that to Mr. Richter. Same format. I'll read it. It's for everyone's edification here and at home. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Joshua Stricker as a member of the zoning hearing board for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Joshua Stricker served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Zoning Hearing Board through February 2015. And whereas Joshua Stricker provided a great service to the Phoenixville Zoning Hearing Board during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and appreciation to Joshua Stricker for all of his efforts and commitment in performing his duties over the past two years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville, that Joshua Stricker is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0 with Ms. Dugan out of the room. Is Mr. Stricker here?
I'll make a motion authorizing the signing of all documents required in the master casting agreement with PennDOT.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers. On the motion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Make a motion considering a resolution supporting the establishment of a separate line item in the Commonwealth budget with administrative support for the Main Street and the Elm Street program.
Second? Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion? Seeing no questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bowers?
I'm sorry?
We need to be a little bit quicker on, on the draw.
A little extra, a little extra meaning on this.
Mr. Crack?
Sure. The, the basis of this is that in the, as a line item in the budget, it provides municipalities like Borough of Phoenixville to take out of a grant application for the Elm Street program and apply a certain, I believe it's 15% of the income to support the staff that would maintain the various programs, whether it be the Main Street program or the Elm Street program. So it gives the opportunity for the municipality to take that 15% portion of the overall grant and apply it to its support staff.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I believe the motion carries 6-0.
I think so.
Okay. Moving on, public hearings. I don't believe we have any this evening, Mr. Crack. We do not. All right, moving right along. Item 11, reports of committees, boards and commissions. Planning Commission?
There are. There are several items that are before us that came out of Planning Commission. And there are four items, and I'd like to take each item individually. First, would like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to Chapter 27 zoning, Part 1, Part 2 and Part 3.
Second? Motion by Mr. Bowers and second by Mr. Richter. Just for clarification, for those following the, the agenda, I believe that's F2 later on. We're just going to jump it up here from policy. Okay. Any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? To schedule and advertise?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I'll call it that.
Second, would like to make the motion to approve, for final approval of subdivision and land development plan for, for 2 Emmett Street.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Richter. On that motion? Seeing no comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, again, I'll call it 6-0.
Third, I would like to make a motion for final approval of the subdivision and land development plan for 468 Emmett Street.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Richter. On that motion, any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
And like, make a motion for...
Question?
Yeah, 416, 418 Dayton. A clarification? 416, 418. Probably only the second time in the time that I've been here, this plan actually only came in as a preliminary. Normally, they all come in as preliminary finals. So that's why this one is different than the two above it, is they go back to the Planning Commission for final approval, then back to you for final approval at a point down the road. So tonight, you're, you're merely, you're approving?
Granting preliminary approval.
Granting preliminary approval, correct. They can't do anything on the site until they come back to Planning Commission.
Okay. Then the motion, the motion is to grant preliminary approval to the subdivision plan of 4416, 418 Dayton Street.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Richter. On the motion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Anything else from Planning Commission, Mr. Bowers?
Thanks.
Thank you. Regional planning? Mr. Kuzner?
No action to report.
Thank you. Harb?
Okay. I'm going to bounce one out of here because we might have an address issue that I just was told about. So I'm going to bundle 1, 3 and 4 together. I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for 101 Bridge Street. That is Bujo's, I believe that's how that's going to be pronounced. The renovation and sign request for 222 Bridge Street, which is the, the barrel, it's a, going to be a little wine tasting place. And for 235 Bridge, which is Bodies by Pilates, it's just the same sign, it's just moved over to a different place. All of this recommended by Harb, action memo of April 7, 2015.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Richter. On the motion? Any discussion? I, I just have a clarification from Harb. With the Bodies by Pilates, they're only moving the one sign. They're not moving that banner sign that was hanging from the...
No, it's just the one sign for now.
It's just that. That's what I, that's what it looked like, but I wanted to make sure. That was seconded by Mr. Richter. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. And on this last one, we're just having a little issue that we have it, I have it as 165 in the things that I did for Harb. And it's on 165 here, but I'm hearing that it might actually be 167. So I don't know how to make this motion.
Well, the application that I'm looking at says 165.
So that's just where I'm...
It's, apparently it's one parcel, but it's two separate buildings. So in the, it's my understanding that the lease for that application says 167. I just want to be sure that there's no mix-up and there's one sign to govern both buildings.
If you're talk, if you're looking at the addresses from that side, 165 would be where the bike shop would be at, and 167 would be where the bead shop was at. So I believe this is correct.
That would be correct.
Correct.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for 165 Bridge Street as recommended by the Harb action memo of April 7, 2015.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Richter. On that motion? Seeing nothing? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Anything else from Harb?
No.
Rec Board?
The only things that I, the only things that I wanted to update with, the last, once Easter egg hunt was a big success. That went really well. And this month, the April, the family night out would be April 24th at the Civic Center at 7 o'clock. The theme is Minute to Win It. And the Father of the Month from, we honored the February one last month, but this month I have both of them. It's the March Father of the Month with Zach Saron, based on an essay by Quinn Saron. And the April Father of the Month is Marvin Leva, written by, essay, the essay written by Jaden. So I just want to give congratulations to those two. And that's pretty much all for our update for the rec bar this month.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Moving on to item 12, council action referred from committee. Not to get sentimental, but we only have one more meeting with this. So Police and Personnel Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ann Caulfield to the vacant position on the Beautification Advisory Committee with the term expiring on October 31st, 2018.
Motion by Mr. Kuzner, second by Mr. Richter. I think you seconded everything so far tonight. I appreciate it. Moves the meeting along. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
I would also like to make a motion reappointing Mr. David Gill to the Recreation Board with the term expiring on April 30th, 2019.
Second? Motion by Mr. Kuzner, second by Mr. Dalton. He snuck in there, wanted on you, Mr. Richter. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Kuzner?
I know he's not here, but I did want to thank Mr. Gill for all the years he's been serving on the Recreation Board and contributing to Phoenixville. serving on the Recreation Board and contributing to Phoenixville.
Duly noted, and he deserves it because he does, he has been involved for a very long period of time. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
I would also like to make a motion directing the Borough Manager to notify the Civil Service Commission to begin the process for creating a new civil service list for patrol officer in June.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuznar, second by Ms. Dugan. I believe our list expires sometime in July, so... So this would keep an active list going, is my, my understanding is. Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Bowers?
Just clarification, I believe that the 2015 budget included funding for that purpose, correct?
It did not.
It did not.
It did not, and I will be bringing a budget amendment to Ms. Dugan's committee next week.
Can I add something into this? I just, the one thing, we just found that out because I thought that that was always on our list, that we had always considered that, and then for some reason it turns out it, we somehow lost it, it did not end up in the final budget, according to Mr. Crack, so it's disappointing, but we have to put it back in there, we can't not have an active list, so.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Anything further, Mr. Kuznar?
No, that's it.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, you have something from...
Yes, I asked, several months ago, we, we in the Police Department put together a committee to review the use of body cameras, and on that committee is Sergeant Marshall, Corporal Frost, Brian, Officer McIntyre, and, none of the other? And Officer Highland. So I just wanted to update, have Lieutenant give an update to council on where we are in that process.
Actually, where we're at right now is we had a committee meeting. We know that this is a hot topic across the United States, it's, it's certainly a debate that's occurring nationally, and we're aware of it, and we are trying to do our due diligence in researching the right camera for our department. So we are T and E-ing some cameras, and we actually just decided to add a couple more to that list to, to do a trial, a test and evaluation on those. We, so we discussed the cameras that we, we were testing, we also discussed other cameras to look into, and just basically trying to figure out both tactically and practically how we're supposed to wear them and things like that. Also, we discussed, you know, policy issues and procedures and how we're gonna implement them, and we discussed monetary issues that we would, at some point, once we decide the camera that we're going to use or need, then if we're gonna take that route, then we would then have to request monetary needs for that. But right now, basically, we are still in the process of evaluating and meeting and discussing, it's not something that we can decide overnight because it, again, it's a national issue, every police department across America is having the same issues and trying to iron out, iron out the same concerns, so that's where we're at right now.
Lieutenant, is there an expected implementation date or best guess at that at this point, or is it still too premature?
It is too premature. We've been working on it for quite a few months, and we still need to iron out some more issues that trying to give you a drop dead date would, it wouldn't be fair.
Anything further for the Lieutenant? Thank you for the update. Moving on, Parks and Rec?
Full agenda for item B, that's for sure. I'll make a motion to consider a resolution for submission of C2P2 grant for funding of Friendship Field lighting project, and then we'll ask Mr. Crack for some additional detail.
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Ms. Dugan. Mr. Crack?
Sure, as, as I think most of council knows, we have put, you have put together a proposal to, to light Friendship for nighttime activities and such. With that, we submitted a grant application to the county for up to 25% funding, and in your package, you'll see a, a letter from the county awarding us $68,000 as 25%. This allows us then to go into DCNR under the C2P2 program for up to 50% of the funding. There is a requirement that we have to, to provide some ADA accessibility, 50% of that is also available through the C2P2 program, so the application will include half of what it would cost to put in the, I don't wanna say minor, but they are really minor in the scope of things, the AD accessible components, and then the, the 50% of the light program. And if you recall, I believe the lighting was about $260,000 and some change, so we're looking to get three quarters of the, the funding through grant process with the borough, only having to put up one quarter of that.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Then I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the Friendship Field Agreement for use by Renaissance Academy?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion? I'll just put my two cents in that, I, I've had concerns with this from the get-go, from the, the many iterations. I think, I can't support this, I can't support a use by a school of, of borough fields that should be available to borough residents, so. Ms. Dugan?
I just wanted to mention that they are paying for the time, the same, at the same rate that anybody would that would be running the fields anyway, so we are going to, it's not like they're getting them for free, and there are times, there are at times, that most likely wouldn't be in use anyway, so I don't really see that this is gonna affect the residents very much at all.
Any other discussions? Mr. Bowers?
Would say there, just highlight that there is a usable upper field and a usable lower field at this point at Friendship. Obviously, we'd love to see improvements to the lower field at, at Friendship, but don't feel that this puts any group out that would like to use the field at a, at a similar time.
Mr. Richter?
Just for complete edification of the information we received at committee earlier, Mr. Watson and staff have been working up at Friendship Field to diligently getting it, get it into working order, which it is, I think it's safe to say, not currently in an acceptable state. So part of this process would be to get it in this, that state for our softball league, but also knowing that, that the kids from the Renaissance Academy would be coming over there at some point in time.
I just have a question of, and I don't know who can answer, if anybody can answer it. So they're, they're paying $25 for every day that they use either Friendship Field or Veterans Park. Is there a day, is there a possibility that they may use both of those fields on a given day, and then is the fee $25 or $50? Because I don't think this, this agreement's very clear on that.
Actually, that's a good catch, Mr. President, it should only be referencing Friendship Field.
So they're only paying for the use of Friendship Field, not Veterans Park?
Right, I think in our original, again, the whole cut and paste thing, I think Veterans was left in there inadvertently.
So Veterans, they're not gonna be using Veterans Park at all?
No.
Is what you're telling me?
That's correct.
Okay. Well then, I don't think that this agreement's ready to be approved in this fashion.
If it states that, I would agree with you and remove, I'd withdraw my motion.
Second? I mean, I think we can approve this agreement in the spirit, oh, speaking of spirits, with those revisions, if someone wants to make that motion, I just don't think we should approve this proposed agreement.
So we'll introduce that item again for approval of the Friendship Field Agreement for use by Renaissance Academy, removing any reference to Veterans Field within the current agreement.
Second.
Okay, new motion by Mr. Richter and second by Mr. Dalton. Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Nay. Motion carries 5-1.
If it's council's pleasure, I'd like to kinda bundle a couple of these items, so I'll just read the event name. Item 3, the Whole Lot of Lulu Vintage Flea Market on October 10. Item 4, the Bark for Life of Phoenixville and Reeves Park, October 4. Item 5, the Annual Dogwood Festival, May 11 through 16. Item 6, the Annual Carnival for a Cure, September 24 and 25, 26 and 27. Item 7, the Second Annual Rib Cook-Off, Saturday, May, or, excuse me, Saturday, June 6. Item 8, the Phoenixville Zombie Run, November 7. Item 9, the 23rd Annual Kiwanis Patriotic Celebration, May 22. Item 11, the inaugural Extreme Top Box Throwdown, October 10. Item 12, the Annual Pumpkin Fest, October 17, removing the suggested rain date of Saturday, October 24. And the reason for that is our Halloween parade is scheduled to be that day. And then also, item 13, the Chester County Red White and Brew Run, September 12. So just to reiterate, that's 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 13.
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Ms. Dugan. Any comments on that motion? Mr. Bowers?
Clarification, the Zombie Run is, proposes to use the Schuylkill River Trail. Will the Schuylkill River Trail through Phoenix Village be open by that date?
I had to think where you were talking, there's so many Phoenix and villages, I'm sorry. That is when? That is? Oh, Zombie...
November 7.
November 7. High percentage, yes. Their, their scheduled, their, their leasing schedule would suggest that that should be open by that timeframe because their completion date is December. And so I believe with their first leasing starting in July, that their intent is to get the equipment out of there, and so they should be able to put that trail back into place, so it's a high, it's a very high probability to be open.
Any other comments, questions?
I guess I only have one other comment, it's great to see a list of events like this in Phoenixville. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of different events, different communities that it's targeting, and it's all happening right here under our nose, which is fantastic, so kudos to the organizers and the people putting the time and effort together for each and every one of these events.
The only comment I, I would have is that on the Annual Pumpkin Fest, that we make sure that they understand that they've lost their rain date, and they may wanna select an, an alternative rain date to be considered by council.
I already know how this is gonna go, but we, we will take care of it.
Okay. I'd hate for them to anticipate being able to use that rain date and two parades show up, or two events.
It will be clear, at least from our perspective, it will be clear.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Anything further from Parks and Rec?
Yes, item 10, consider, I'll make a motion to consider the Kiwanis request to waive any and all fees for the 23rd Annual Kiwanis Patriotic Event.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Ms. Dugan. On the motion? I think, what are we talking about here, Gene, as far as? No, the, the waiver, I...
The dollar amount, I believe it's a, it's a $25 application fee, a $75 use fee, and a $250 deposit. The deposit would go back normally, so you're talking $100.
That's being actually waived if council approves it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discuss, any discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm guessing six zero, because I didn't hear any opposition. Anything further, Mr. Richter?
One last thing. The committee had the pleasure of Ms. Willie Goldstein from the Phoenixville Hospital, who gave us a presentation on this young and lonesome play program, which everyone was deeply attracted to. This is the sign that everybody put up in our parks. The sign is paid for by money from the state, who is responsible for whatever is going on the annual, whether it's state or the state. Mr. Watson said, at this point in time, they, she has provided us with a resolution. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to generate a new resolution for this item for presenting, I think, and make...
Thank you, Ms. Richter.
Second.
I don't think we need a motion unless you wanna make a, make that a formal motion.
I'll make, I will make that a motion.
To direct staff? Okay. Second by Mr. Bowers? Okay. So a motion by Ms. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers. On that motion? Any discussion?
Just, just a point of clarification, that may require an actual ordinance if you want to enforce it as opposed to a resolution.
It's already discussed, it's much later on.
Oh, yeah.
That's why it took three years to get back here, they did not wanna deal with it. So the only way to get by that is to do a...
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Mr. Kuznar?
Just for clarification to the public or anybody else that wants to know, it, it is not an, an ordinance, it's just basically a sign there that says no smoking, so.
No, I, I understand. This was presented, I think, in my second month, so about three or four years ago, and was summarily shot down after I made the motion, so I'm glad you're bringing it back. I think it's something that's worthwhile discussion, to discuss. Any, any further comments on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? 5-1 with Ms. Dugan opposing, same. Mr. Crack, consider yourself duly notified? Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Richter? Thank you. Finance?
All right, I will make, I will bundle all of the, well, no, I'll bundle 1 through 4. I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 prepaid's dated 2/15/2015 to 3/7/2015 in the amount of $1,320.96. Approve the 2015 prepaid's dated 2/15/2015 to 3/7/2015 in the amount of $678,018, there's a bunch of dots here. Let's try this again. Okay, just the dots, I'm getting, be confused with no comma. Approve the 2014, 2015 prepaid's ACH dated 1/31/2015 in the amount of $8,026.51, and the budget transfer, 2015-02, of $1,200 from Finance Salary to Human Resources Advertising, for advertising, and $4,500 from Finance Salary to Human Resources Board and Commission Fees for Contracted Services.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
And the last item is to approve the staff recommendation to acquire parcel, tax parcel, 15-3-5 in the amount of $500, and I'm sure Mr. Crack could explain this further.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Bowers. Mr. Crack?
Sure, the, the tax repository at, at a point certain has, provides the municipality the opportunity that if it wanted to, to acquire a parcel of land that would, that has not otherwise had any interest by any party in the various sales that the, the sheriff's office has put up, and so they give us an opportunity to, to do that. And normally, I mean, there's, we don't normally get into these things, but when you look at the two maps that I, that I've provided to you, you'll see that just north of the, the property, there is a, there's a little clearing there, and that's where our pump station for the, the sewer system on the entire north side... the sewer system on the entire north side of the new development all comes through. And, and we have an easement for that. So, two things occur, one, as you can see, there's a road that goes down there, and then that parcel then ties to the, to the county piece. This would do two things, for $500, it would give us the opportunity, if we ever had to expand the sewer plant or rebuild that, I mean, the, the pump station, rebuild it, we could relocate it on our property, not have to deal with an easement. And then, as the other map that I've, that I've show you, there is a large parcel of land that is the, the right-of-way that PennDOT has for the, what was then the Northern Relief Route way back when. If that is ever given up by PennDOT, we would have the ability to make a direct connection using the, that land and the road to the county piece, and have it across the top of the borough trail system tying into inevitably what will be the county's trail system that goes along the Schuylkill River up to the Fish Ladder and up to the Black Rock Sanctuary, and then ultimately back down into the, to the borough, because the, the county's land comes to where the trail that we'll be building with the Toll Brothers piece will go right to the train trussel. So, there's a, for $500, this is one of those rare opportunities that might give future managers and future council some opportunity to do something. And I think if you saw in the, the letter, the, the typical dollar amount that the, the county would seek would be about $2,000. In discussion with them, they've, they've said at least $500, so that's why it's $500.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries six zero. Anything further from finance? I'm taking that as an.
No, no, sorry.
Thank you. Infrastructure?
No actions coming out of infrastructure for council's action tonight. Lots of discussion continues in infrastructure of the many, many projects, and as, as our, as our finance review given tonight, a lot of capital dollars being used on numerous, numerous projects across the borough, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Economic development, we don't have missed mail, but I don't believe there's anything coming forward from that committee at this point. Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising an ordinance to amend Chapter 15, which is motor vehicles and traffic of the codes of the ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville, as recommended in the committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Richter. Mr. Crack, can you provide some information on this?
Sure, if you, if you approve this motion, the, we would schedule and advertise the, the public hearing to, to basically amend the Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles to include a new Zone A for designation of residential permit parking areas, that would be Mill Street, that would be on the south side of Mill Street, basically from North Main to the area just below the Veterans Memorial Gay Street Bridge, that's the area of housing that exists there. Those days would be Monday through Saturday, and the time limit for non-permit would be two hours, the same as it is in all of the other residential areas. And then Section 2 basically just adds that street to the already existing list. And then Section 3 is adding a, an additional handicap parking spot on First Avenue on the north side, and I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries six zero.
I do have just a quick question regarding item two. Is, was that taken care of by?
That was already scheduled and advertised.
Okay. So, moving forward to item three, I would like to, is it a direction for staff, or is it?
Make a motion for.
Would be to make a motion to authorize an ordinance review by the solicitor regarding the recent enacted PA gun law changes.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Bowers. I believe the nature of this is that there is recent legislation passed at the state level that, well, actually, I'll let the solicitor.
So, you got a letter from him on that too?
Sure. Act 192, signed into law last year, didn't make any changes substantively to gun laws, but it did provide for the ability for a challenge, challenger to any municipality's gun law that they felt was inconsistent with state law to recover attorney's fees. That obviously has made it very interesting or incentivized individuals or groups to look very carefully at each municipality's laws with respect to firearms. So, as a result of the ability to obtain attorney's fees in a successful challenge, it's a pretty big issue statewide, and most municipalities are taking a look at any laws that they might have that impact the use of firearms or possession that might be contrary to state law, now that there's the ability to challenge and get attorney's fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I guess I'm just concerned about putting money out there for a review of an ordinance that hasn't come our way via a challenge or everything. I mean, the borough is a member of the Pennsylvania Municipal League and the Association of Boroughs, whereas items like this that are up are vetted and reviewed. It wouldn't be necessary for us to spend money on a review unless we were challenged. If we were challenged, then I think would be an appropriate time to look at our, at our ordinance.
Ms. Richter?
I, I think that stance is being very reactionary. There's, and you can see it out there, there are, there have been and are challenges that have cost significant amounts of money. So, we could be sitting in the very opposite situation where instead of being proactive on this, we're reactive, protecting ourselves and spending taxpayer money on something that we could have simply gotten ourselves ahead of, and I think that's what this is doing.
I'll come back to you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kuzner?
Throughout the Borough Code, also, if you do a search for gun or firearm, there's, there's very few ordinances where guns or firearms are even mentioned, and the few that they are mentioned, I don't think in any way are going to conflict with any state laws, so I don't think that the, with respect to the solicitor, I don't know how much time it's actually going to take, but I don't think he has a very big job ahead of him in, in concurrence with what Ms. Richter said.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, my understanding is via a challenge, the person who's challenging isn't, the borough isn't obligated to pay the, the fees of that attorney unless the, the borough decides to challenge it. So, even if the ordinance is reviewed, modified, or whatever, someone could still challenge it, and then we would still be subject to the same thing, is my understanding of it.
Yeah, the, the only way that you would have to pay attorney's fees if, if you were, if the challenger was successful in his challenge to the ordinance. So, I think the intent is to be proactive, make sure nothing on the books now is inconsistent, and I would agree, I don't think it's going to be a very big job to do, but look at the ordinances and see if there's any that relate to the regulation of firearms to make sure there's nothing inconsistent with the state law, now that there is an incentive for someone to at least be, be looking for those kind of issues.
Could you give, give council an idea of the expense ballpark range?
I would look through the codified ordinances to make sure there's no issues, probably less than an hour, unless you have a lot of gun laws on the books, I don't know that you do, I wouldn't suspect you do, so we're probably talking less than an hour.
At $135?
Yes, sir.
That's reasonable. I feared a bigger, I feared a, I feared a bigger bill.
No, Mr., no, Mr. Mayor.
I, I would rather pay our solicitor our rate versus paying someone else's attorney their rates, because I'm going to guess it's going to be higher quite, quite significantly so. I thought I saw a hand over here. Mr. Kuzner?
I was just going to let the mayor know that when I did a search, I believe I was with Mr. Dalton, there was only five times it was mentioned in the, in the Borough Code, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries six zero. Nothing more, thank you, Mr. Dalton. Moving on, we'll go to item 13, public participation, open the second round of public participation, invite any members of the public who wish to come forward to do so. Please identify yourself, identify whether you're a borough resident, please sign in, and please keep comments to five minutes or less.
Hi, my name's Tish Jones, and I am a resident here in Phoenixville. I'm here because I'd like to ask if we've come up with any progress at all about the traffic light over there near Callahill, near where Kelly Chevrolet is, and Route 23, and we're still having the issues where you have to wait a very, very long time in order for you to be able to get out of the side streets. And I think people even taking chances, just running out and getting into that middle lane, and scooting along, and then getting over into the other lane. So, I don't know what the plan is and whether anything has been done yet about that.
Ms. Jones, staff has been engaged in a series of meetings with PennDOT related to the Parkway that was proposed. During those conversations, that issue has come up, and staff and PennDOT are working together to hopefully come forward with a proposal for council within the near future, within the next couple of months. So, we are, we, we know, I know it's an issue, I think all of council would acknowledge that, and we're working with PennDOT to get it addressed.
Okay, well, that's a start, anyway. The other thing is, is that I'd like to know how you feel about stop signs. We have lots of stop signs, but many people don't stop at the stop sign, they're like just rolling through. And I do know that up in Royersford, they do have a sign that says, and I might have mentioned this before, at the stop sign, and you stop, roll through. If you don't stop and you just roll through, get a ticket for $110. So, I don't know if you've seen it at all, but I just think that it's really necessary, because what I see people doing, they're not stopping. So.
No, I understand, and unfortunately, I don't think another sign, if they're not obeying the stop sign, I'm not sure how much value another sign would, would, but I know that the police are out there trying to patrol that. I mean, I see it every day, and I think every member of council and probably everybody in this room has seen it occur multiple times. And it's, it's an issue that unless we have a, a police cruiser at every stop sign, I'm not sure that it can be addressed or resolved 100%.
Well, nothing is ever 100%, but I just wanted to let you know that this is definitely going on.
No, I, I appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Jones.
Right.
Seeing no other public participation, we'll close that round of public participation, move on to staff reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, very brief report. I'd, I'd just like to speak out in support of the Social Concerns Committee's request that the Main Street Bridge connecting Phoenixville's north and south sides be named and dedicated in the honor of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and you have given the manager copies of the letters we received from the churches this evening.
I have, and asked them to be distributed.
To pass to council. And also, just to mention to the public that attended the 21st Annual Community Prayer Breakfast in memory of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, along with President Kowalski. And the Emma Valentine Award of Compassion was presented to Emmett Grucci, and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Humanitarian Award was presented to Pastor Buddy and Belinda Goodwin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything for the mayor? Seeing nothing, we'll move on with the manager's report.
Mr. President, I've got several items for your consideration. The first is, I know that the, the primary is now, it's on Tuesday, May 19th, that happens to be the, the meeting date of the infrastructure and the finance committee. We should, if we're going to change that date, we need to, to advertise that, and this precedes anything that you would be doing possibly in June, based on earlier discussions this evening. So, I would just ask, between now and next week, when we have our meeting.
Do you have a suggested date? I thought I saw that you mentioned a date at the.
I don't have the date in front of me, but I believe.
I thought it was the following Monday or, or Thursday.
That is May, May, I think it was the following Wednesday, the 27th, because the Monday to 25th is Memorial Day, the 26th is policy and economic development, and so the 27th would be the next logical day. So, if, if you're, everybody's fine with Wednesday, the 27th, then I can, I can do that.
Where's that from?
Okay. I unfortunately have a conflict, but I'm only one of several.
Is our final meeting?
I will try and move my conflict.
Okay.
So, I, do, do you, I think we should probably have a motion on that.
So that I can, because I have to, have to advertise that.
Yep.
To advertise the finance and infrastructure meeting to move from the 19th to the 27th event, the sixth and seventh respectable.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries six zero.
Second, second item, Mr. President, is in your packet, you have a, a notification that we received another 902 grant from DEP in the amount of $245,371.12. We've been rather successful with these on a continuing basis, and we'll just keep going after them as we can. You also have in your packet a copy of the, the announcement from the Chester County Commissioners giving us $65,315 for the, the field lighting. In your packet, something that was, I didn't even know was going on, I didn't even know this organization existed, but there is a Disaster Recovery Institute International, DRI International, that apparently looks on a, on an international scale on emergency information and how it's put out and what have you, and our own office of Emergency Management has a, a Facebook site, I guess it is, that puts out a tremendous amount of information. This group nominated our OEM, and it went up against probably the two largest in the nation, Kaiser Permanente, which is a huge hospital system, and Red Cross. Kaiser won, but we came in third, so not, not too bad, actually. So, kudos to our Office of Emergency Management folks.
Mr. Crack, for everyone here, the coordinator, what's her name, so we can give her recognition?
She asked that I'd not say that.
Ah, okay, then we'll respect that wish.
I could tell you.
Well, I, I.
Also, in your packet, you have a, a special engagement letter from the previous law firm that is now the law firm of Sean Kilkeny. As we did when we transitioned from Unruh Turner to Friedman Schuman, there are some things that still have a little ticking or beating heart. They've proposed a, a letter indicating that, at least right now, these are the two projects that still have a little bit of a beating heart. They would hold their rate at the $135 an hour. Solicitor and I have talked about it, these are the kinds of things that make sense, we asked that you consider that engagement letter till we can complete these two projects. And I would say that with regard to number one, Toll Brothers is arguably at or near the finish line. Number two, if you know the, the entity of ATL, and I won't get into anything more about it, that one's probably got a little bit of a shelf life to it, it just doesn't ever go away, but that would be it. And so, yeah, but probably appreciate a motion to keep them engaged if, if council so inclined.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Bowers, to accept the special engagement letter, special counsel engagement letter. Any discussion, Ms. Richter?
I can't say that I liked this when we did this with Unruh Turner and our previous solicitor, and now we're doing it again. Is there a reason why the current law firm can't just kind of pick up where we left off? Why there can't be just flat-out dissemination of information and, and move on?
So, we don't have to pay for a learning curve?
I mean, how much of a learning curve are we talking about?
Does it matter if we have to pay for it?
All I can tell you is I'm, we're still seeing UPT bills, and now we're going to see UPT bills, Kilkeny bills, and our current solicitor bills. It just seems to be a little out of control, and. It just seems to be a little out of control, and, and I, for one, won't vote for that.
Any other discussion on it? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? So, I've got, let's do a roll call on that, because it's four to...
Four to two.
Four to two?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm not seeing it. Okay, so, four, motion carries four to two, with Mr. Richter and Mr. Dalton being the days.
I also, just, as you know, we, we received funding from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, as well as the Chester County Planning Commission for the Vision Partnership Program to update our subdivision land development. We've gone through the comprehensive plan, we've gone through zoning, and now we're, the third leg of that stool is the saldo. We have put together a team of, of folks. That meeting, our first kickoff meeting is scheduled to be Thursday, April 23rd, at six o'clock. I would ask that, we have zoning, we have staff, we have the consultants. Typically, council would recommend one of its own to participate in that. I don't know exactly how many meetings we will have. It'll be a lot of background information from the consultants, mostly because of what it's dealing with, but certainly council should have some representation on that.
Do I hear any takers? Do I hear any takers? If not, I will gladly serve. Mr. Bowers?
I would, it, it's a parallel to, you know, space on PC, so I would certainly do that.
Anybody else? Mr. Bowers, and I, I guess I'll serve as an alternate to the, to the extent that you need an alternate.
Okay.
I don't need another meeting with a two-week-old at home.
Okay. Then I have two more items. One is, the mayor and I will be attending the Pennsylvania Municipal League Dinner. I think it's next Thursday, it's up at Cootstown. As you recall, last year, we hosted it here. Now, it's our turn to go up there, that'll probably be the turnover, as the mayor's been the chair for the Southeast District. That'll probably be a turnover up there. And then lastly, Monday, February 20th, at the Foundry, we will be having the ribbon-cutting for the...
April 20th?
February?
That's what you said. So, either we're talking 2016, or, or we're going to pull out the DeLorean.
April, April 20th, Monday, April 20th, a week from yesterday, at four o'clock over here at the Foundry. We've invited everybody and their brother. It happens to coincide with a kayak sojourn that will be over at the, on the other side of the river, over at St. Michael's. I understand that Bike Sport's actually going to bring a team of bikers over here to sort of kick off the trail from a biking perspective. So, a lot of fun, four o'clock Monday, and everybody's obviously invited. We have, I know some of the county commissioners are planning on attending, some of our state and local, state representatives are attending, and various organizations that were involved in the funding of the trail are, are attending.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Anything for the borough manager? Seeing none, co-directors, public works, fire chiefs, and finance directors' reports, I believe, are all in the packet. Any question for any of those individuals? Ms. Richter?
Is there an executive session?
Well, one second. I need Fire Department liaison.
No report, but I would like to say that, that I'd give, I would like to give big thanks to our Fire Department for doing a very, seems to be like, seems to be a very tireless job. There seems to be a lot of activity within the Fire Department, and I think they go pretty unrecognized a lot of times, so, so thank you to the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Now, Ms. Richter.
Motion to move to executive session. For purposes of personnel litigation.
Thank you.
Will we be back?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six-zero.
You guys taking a break, right?
Yes. I'll note that council is coming back from executive session at 10:41. During executive session, personnel litigation, nine forty-one, sorry, nine forty-one, during executive session, personnel litigation and real estate were discussed. Any matters, Mr. Richter?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to extend the agreement of land swap with Phoenix, Phoenix LLC, Phoenix View LLC to the date of July 14th, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, myself, for reasons that I've said before, our firm represents the applicant. Any other business to be brought before council?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.